Are we good to go, Angie?
Yep, I'm good.
Alright, it's 6:00 PM. We will call the meeting to order. Clerk, we have a roll call and an establishment of a forum.
Isaiah Crowe?
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw?
Here.
Barb Stotts?
Here.
Matt Crowe? Dylan Helmenstein?
Here.
Angie Wolf?
Here.
Alright, I have proof of posting. Please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? Mary Dunn, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth? Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yeah.
I vote yes as well. Oh, Angie, sorry. Put like her name, say it personally. Angie is there, okay. Alright, any public input today? You're closest to this.
That would be no.
Alright, moving on to minutes and payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of April 28th, 2025?
So moved.
Any question? Mary Dunn, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth? Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll rules and disbursements?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the May 2025 board bills? Okay, you're done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Moving on to district business. We have some distinguished guests tonight presenting about their awesome trip to Milwaukee. So come on up.
I was hoping for more, but the rest of the world.
Oh, this is fantastic. We're not here.
Three of us.
This is really informal, so. Don't be nervous, easy crowd.
Maybe I'll have to.
I love it. Yeah, how about you guys come up here?
I need to go over there, dude.
Good evening, school board members. We're here tonight on behalf of 57 very excited and very grateful students who had the chance to visit the Milwaukee Public Museum, thanks to you. Also joining us were our six brave staff members led by Ms. Schmidt and 11 amazing parent chaperones who deserve a medal just for keeping up with us all day.
This field trip was unforgettable. We got to walk through a real butterfly enclosure. Yes, actual butterflies landing on our heads, our arms, and even a few unsuspecting noses. It was magical.
Unless you were afraid of bugs, that was a character building experience.
We time traveled to the streets of old Milwaukee and European Village where we learned how people lived back in the early days.
Some of us are still wondering how people lived without fly by back then.
Then we watched an IMAX show all about steam learning and how the universe is artistic on many different levels, from scientists to engineers to artists. It was truly a neat experience.
Unless you suffered promotion sickness, then it became not time.
Further exploration took us to Egypt where we saw real mummies. We also saw dinosaur fossils and replica's glacial landscapes embedded into a rainforest.
This trip wasn't just fun. It really brought our classroom learning to life. It sparked curiosity, opened our minds, and gave us memories to share.
So from all of us, the students, the staff, the chaperones, we thank you for your generosity in supporting our trip, funding our trip, and we hopefully can do it again next year. Get some pictures to share.
Did you go through it?
Yeah, I kind of put them on. Anyway, I wasn't paying attention.
That's okay. We have some.
Let's start with some.
Yep, dinosaurs of it. Of course, it's always a hit. And the butterflies, which one really did land on Angie's nose? And I had, the next day when we got back from our trip, I spent four hours the night before after we got home putting together a slideshow, 100 slides and pictures that students had shared with me from the day. Have the full one if you really want to see that one. But it's 100 slides. We had, we drew it out last year, which is fantastic. We've done this trip years, even years before I started working here, which was 10 years ago. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Al. Thank you guys for sharing. Hold on. You do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to. We've got you. Those moments are always really special and we've been trying to underscore the importance of bringing the kids in the classroom in the meeting. So that's awesome, as well as emphasizing the importance of those off-campus opportunities for the kids. So, great to see that field trip continue. Moving on to reports. Do you want to start off by introducing Jim?
Yeah, absolutely. Jim, we're gonna have you come down and take the hot seat. You'll be Angie Wolf.
Angie, I won't even come close to you.
Well, as Jim makes his way down here, he's gonna talk a little bit, but I just wanted to, I know I sent everyone a short introduction, but Jim, I have known Jim for quite some time. We first met probably close to 12 years ago when he was Board of Control, WA Board of Control President. My previous job, I did a lot of work with the WA initiatives and things, so got to know him that way. And then he and I taught a graduate course at Edgewood for coaches and teachers called High Impact Leadership for three years together. And then he retired a couple of years ago, but has. And, but then has dipped into different school districts and helped them out. And so when we were in need of some help with the activities, athletic director position, I called him to see if he would be available. And he just has a depth and breadth like nobody other that I know. So has really helped us out. So I just wanted to give you the floor, Jim, and if there's fill in the gaps or give us a little bit more.
So, good evening, everybody. It's nice to put a name with a face for some of you and it was nice meeting some of you before this. Usually I start talking and I clear out a room, but they left. Yeah, so I've, on the drive over here, I figured out this is my 40th year of doing things in public education.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. So, you know, and all the way back to the beginning, at the end, it's all about the kids, right? It's all about trying to figure out things to do for the kids and trying to make opportunities there for kids in different ways. So it's, it's very enjoyable and frustrating at the same time. So what I have found out in my copious week and a half of being here is, first of all, you have a very wonderful district. You really do. It's inviting, it's warm, it's welcoming. The kids are really nice. The faculty members are here. There's a spree decor that comes out very quickly. The place is clean.
Continue.
It's spotless. And you are in the midst of dealing with what I think a lot of school districts deal with. And that is turnover, change. You get things in line and then somebody leaves. A single point of failure. And so then that gets lost along the way. So then you build it back up. And so I guess what I'm trying to do is try to do some light work for the next person, right? And then put together something that doesn't have one point of failure. So that when somebody leaves, which is going to happen, you aren't losing all that expertise and then Alex walking out the door. So that's kind of where we're at. I was, I, I say this to Michelle and I've said this to Liz a few times. I don't make any, whom I judge, right? What's good or bad, or what's been doing well and not going well. You know, mine is to just give you what I see, right? And try to help out and get things in order as you move forward for the coaches, for the, you know, obviously for the kids, for the coaches, and then for the school district. So that's what I'm doing. And along the way, I'm going to try to meet with every coach. Got about halfway through right now. And just sit down with them, depending on what season they're in. And, you know, if you're in the spring season, okay, when's your seating meeting? Do you know when your regionals and sectionals? Please let us know what your seat is so we can plan appropriate. Have you got everything that you need, so on and so forth? All coaches, what are we gonna do with the summer? Wild, wild west where everybody can do everything this summer. So Liz and I, she's helping out, we're gonna try to put something together and get it out this week for all the coaches. You know, I don't think it's gonna be a problem here because people are so willing to work together and share. And they're so used to doing it. So I don't think it's gonna be a problem whatsoever.
Well, I'm so happy you're here and I, listen. I, I said this, but in hindsight, I think this would have been beneficial for us last year as we've navigated this position and now it has its own identity and we've kind of been in this reactive mode of trying to figure out stability and what, and added on role, you know, turnover and different people in the position. But finally feels like we're doing something proactively and you're getting the processes, procedures outlined of just what that job entails from a more administrative even procedural standpoint of what on a weekly, monthly, annual basis does that position look like in terms of scheduling and this and that, you know? So I'm just grateful that you're here and that we can go into this new season with a little bit grounded in some proactive behavior, so. Do we have questions off the bat or feedback or anything?
I was, I really liked your line, "single point of failure", and making sure that's not something that persists here. What do you, in your first few days here, imagine that looks like when you're at now?
Great question. So with Gwyn, one of the things that we did today is we sat down with the fall and said, "Okay, here's how you navigate the WIA website. Here's where you're gonna find this information. Here, how many games can a football team play a year? How many, how many matches can a volleyball team?" So the assistant, as well as the principal, who has some of that knowledge, who is busy doing all the other things. So there's more than one person and then the athletic director. So when they're sitting down, they're going to be much more efficient, effective together because she'll know what that person is talking about. And of course, then with, there's a likelihood, high likelihood, that whoever comes into this position is probably gonna need time to grow into it. And that's the final thing I want to leave you with is, this isn't a, this isn't a 9:5 job. You gotta kind of know a little bit about a lot of things. You know, what's going on in softball, you know? You know, it's picture centric. You know, what goes on with baseball and the Pictures and Catchers Week and golf? And how do you get a golf course? Football, hey, player, football, there's only eight games. Why have that stupid 200 game? And everything else. And so you kind of, you gotta want to love it. You just can't come in and say, "Well, yeah, I like the money and I want to do the job." It just doesn't work that way. So that, as you look forward to people taking this position, that would be my, my only suggestions to you.
Thank you.
I love the idea that you're thinking about getting systems in place and just something to base everything on. I think that's a good structure to have in place and I think that will benefit us in the future.
And some of it can be done, infinite campus, just talking together. I assume spring is a new season for some of the admin type stuff with athletics too, which will help.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know how infinite campus fits with art school. What's with, is it arbiter? Is that art? So all those.
Through art school.
So that's all gonna be combined in the next 12 months.
It's a lot more smoother than Skyward, so that's what we've been doing. From an education side of it.
Okay, alright. Thanks so much, Jim.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, you're coming up. Yeah, you can go back. I mean, the seat's open.
I sat in this seat for 20 years. I think I'm more comfortable up there.
Thanks again, Jim. And tonight, our admin reports are gonna be combined into a lovely presentation. They have for us, so maybe it's better we move. Some of us anyway. Welcome, Tom. Thank you for being here tonight. Otherwise, don't get to see your lovely face on a new basis. Alright, I'll. Why don't you all come to the live team now? You can assume the chairs up here. So as everyone gets seated, one of the things we thought was really important, we have been working as a team together, just building our collaborative spirit, doing a lot of things to really work as a K-12 campus. And so we thought it might make a lot of sense to give you an update as to, you know, we've been, been together since July 1st. And a lot of times, especially when challenges happen, you get stuck in those challenges and you don't, you really forget like all of the work and all of the things that you've actually accomplished in the short time we've been together. And so we sat down as a team a couple of weeks ago and really went through that. And it was a really good process. And then also what are still some areas of growth that we have moving forward? So we thought it would make sense to present that instead of having our typical board reports to give you a little, just small nugget of what we've been doing over the past eight, seven, eight months and then talk about what our opportunities for growth are. So we will start with, there's some themes and I know I put that in our, in your notes this morning, but so safety and infrastructure enhancement. So I'll talk about some of the things and then I'll lead on the team to do other things. So some of the slides I put together, some of the slides they put together. So just so you know how it'll flow. But as you know, one of our biggest, I would say, priorities this year has been safety. And so the first two, just strengthening the physical safety measures and our response protocols. So just a little bit more about that. So when we first start, we learned quite quickly, we were not in compliance with Department of Justice. So there was a lot of things that we needed to have happen. And one of them was just to have our local law enforcement come around and just canvass the building to see what changes we needed. And we needed quite a few. And that precipitated lots of our conversations at this level with changing door locks, the front entrances, secure entrance in both the middle high, middle school side and the high school side, as well as just the PA system. There's just all different sets of doors that needed to be changed out. We also needed to look at our emergency response plan. So our crisis plan had been in existence for a long time that really hadn't been looked at. So we totally revamped that, went to standard, our SRP model, our standard response protocols. And you can see that on the right. And then we had our, we got trained as administrators and then we trained our whole staff in a short amount of time. In the first couple of months that we were here, we also then collaborated with all of our local law enforcement. And they came in this fall and trained our whole staff. And then as some of you might remember, this spring, this in mid-March, we had, and I guess I'll let, I'll look over here at Tom, we did a reunification. And I'll let you talk about that.
Yeah, so a big, a big kudos to working with Jody and Cartman and a lot of other Dean County Sheriff's Office officers. And just really bringing not just like our school staff together, but everyone from our community and fire and ambulance and who the people were calling and from dispatch. That was like a really unique and cool event that we were able to like kind of spearhead and kind of set the tone for other places too. Like how do you bring everybody together? And then really looking at our reunification, if we needed to use it for any reason. And then like myself and Jody have been looking at what other sites, just so we don't have just one in our back pocket. Like we'd be able to call on other people as well in other district spaces to make sure that we have options if we need them in the future. And it's not, we don't know what to do. It's like, alright, we're gonna do this and making sure we have that in place.
I will say, even though we had a challenging situation in our parking lot happen, this fall, this team really learned from that. Number one, we learned how to work together in a crisis because a lot was going on. But then after the fact, really looked at our parking lot and made a lot of changes. So kudos to the principals for what they did to make some of those changes. And I don't know if anybody wants to elaborate on that specifically.
Yeah, so at the elementary school now, I'm out there in the mornings crossing guards. So we're actually using the crosswalks that are there. Email to staff, to parents, trying to help with that flow of traffic. If you're getting out of your car, here's where you park, here's where you walk, just to help really control the traffic flow and pedestrian flow as well.
Yep, similar to that from the high school, middle school end. We did take out the middle area, which a lot of times you could come through the middle section. A couple of things with that area is the sun is always right at that spot. So reality is, and the buses are on one side, your line of sight is completely blocked. So having our students going, having both those basically one ways is a lot better with no cut through in the center. Also, we changed where drop off and pickup are for our students. They are all over in the elementary circle. So if a high schooler or a middle schooler is getting picked up or dropped off, they use these exits right here so that they can get out and go there. It really took away a lot of the traffic flow that was happening in there. We also get to get out there, you know, and every day we'd be, we'd be out there, but we weren't like as involved. And so now we get to get out there and be involved, whether it's with the stop sign, whether it's with just talking with our kids and really just keeping the movement with our kids, staying in the crosswalks and going across from there. But it was great because our parents responded really well, which was really super to see. And just so thankful. Unfortunately, that it took something like this for us to make those changes, but it made the changes, which is what we, what we needed. And our students have done a very great job, as well as our parents and guardians that are picking everybody up.
And then this week, you probably saw an email. We're doing our lockdown drill again now on Wednesday. And much like if you were at the March event and we're at the Grove with our community members doing the tabletops, what will be happening is the Cartman and Jody Hager, they're gonna be leading, they'll go into every single elementary classroom. Have a little Q and A with the students to talk about why we do those drills and things like that. And then they'll do another round of that for the high school by grade level.
So that it's not just, alright, we're doing a lockdown and go back to your day. And not also putting our teachers on having to lead those discussions. We can have the professionals help lead those discussions to help also making sure everyone's getting a uniformed, like consistent message. So everyone will get the conversation and then we'll have a drill in the afternoon.
Alright, technology, infrastructure, that was another thing around safety. And Dale has left efforts with that with dependable solutions. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that.
Well, the board's had the pleasure of meeting Joe. He's been wonderful to work with and his whole team. So, you know, starting with his gap analysis, just taking a look at our overall infrastructure. Cyber security, data backup, a lot of things behind the scenes that, you know, that most of our staff won't ever see. Done a ton of work there. But, you know, one of the things Joe talks about, it's the idea of education driving the technology and then just getting us, getting us up to industry standards. I think it's, we've made a huge leap this school year. And I, and I would anticipate this will be an ongoing process for us into next year. One thing that they've helped us with is just building that long-term budget. And I think he talked to you a little bit about that as well. But that's one of our big boulders that I think where we took a step forward this year. So had to be on our list.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, I know Kelly, there's a couple of things that you want to talk about here.
Sure, I can jump in. Really, that says what it needs to change. And I know that took a lot of effort, but I cannot tell you how much gratitude our special education and VA staff have for that because it has really given more children the opportunity to be outside playing safely. The other effort that we continue to focus on in terms of safety for students is nonviolent crisis intervention. And we've done that over the last couple of years by expanding it from more than just special education staff. Because often when kids are becoming dysregulated, it's in general education classrooms and our classroom teachers can be at that frontline. And I am very thrilled to say that those numbers continue to significantly decline over what we've seen throughout the course of several years. And then planning ahead, looking at all those other safety measures and thinking about student services and the new facilities.
Anything about hallway supervision, Tom?
Just the fact that we have staff members who are designated to making sure kids are where they need to be in a class. And I think, I mean, we don't know what the difference is, like from just like an anecdotal side, but that's a huge comment I heard in the first half of the year was like, and even like when we're walking, giving tours to potential like teachers in our building, that's like the first thing they say is like, "Your hallways have nobody in that, this is weird."
Mary Beth said that today when I was.
So like kids are in classrooms and they're learning. That's a, that's a huge compliment that we've been getting this spring from people we've been bringing in.
And to piggyback with what the nonviolent crisis, where that has been used, teachers are trained in that. So there have been times and moments where maybe a student was, whether you want to use the words dysregulated or whether they were just upset. I mean, you can use, there was a teacher that was in the hallway, whether they were on their duty or not, under supervision, and were able to help basically put a, be a first step for a student. So rather than it go further out, it further escalated. It almost kind of had like a chance to be a loss because the kids had seen this person in the hallways before, even though they may not have had him as a teacher, they're still felt comfortable starting the conversation. Alright, well, the next big theme as we brainstorm was community culture and collaboration. So the first three, that K-12 team structure, so I'm gonna go into these individually. So before I, before I get to those, I want to give kudos. So we've been working with, Damian LaCroix has come in to our district, worked with myself. And then as our team, we've met three times this year. And I really think it's brought us closer together as a team, established our own leadership styles, but then how we can work together. And it was interesting because so often, we all get so busy, right? And that's the last thing we put on our list is our development. It's always like, what else should we be doing in the building? And I think it was really important to build a strong team, to be able to do all the things we're talking about. So that was just one key piece in that. But then, so first off, that K-12 team structure, I giggled a bit. Like the first thing we did is we got everybody from the school on the football team in a WHSD, right? And took a big picture of the whole district. But then continued to figure out ways that we could bring the team together. And I'll let actually Liz and Sarah can maybe talk about the holiday thing and then other things that happened.
Sure, so as you know, we did a, before Christmas break, winter break, we had the middle school, high schoolers come over to the elementary school to help lead some activities. They were based around some books and then usually an activity that went with it. It was really, it was really well.
It was really, it was really well, in the future, we want teachers to plan it so they can have a little bit more say, but it was really cool seeing those middle schoolers and high schoolers in the elementary building, working with those little kids. And then they also came over for our Earth Day activity as well, and they were more engaged because it was more of a sign up. So those kids really wanted to be there versus you have to be there. So we're learning on how to maneuver coming together as one campus. And I think it's awesome opportunities for those kids to be coming over.
Yep, and I would second that wholeheartedly. I mean, it was really cool to watch our students and interact with our younger students and then also see that role modeling piece of seeing some of our students at our events and seeing, oh wait, that kid came and we built a snowman together, you know, something like, something along those lines. So that was, again, we're a K-12 campus, which we have these opportunities, so continuously building on that. After that, after that day of working with it, our students did separate out to multiple areas. We had some students that went tubing over at Tyrrell for that afternoon. We had some students that went to get to see Wicked, which we have an alum that was in, which was super cool. And then we also had some students that went bowling and then some that were also making some cookies that were then taken over to the senior center afterwards. So just some, really just another way to build, in that case, we took the middle school, high school, but we wanted to build some of that culture within them as well, without the overarching theme of you have, you're in class right now and this is what we're doing, things like that. There was a little bit less of that piece for the students where they may have felt well, because they chose where they wanted to go with the hope to, you know, choose something that they felt comfortable in and were able to kind of, you know, take off any of those, any of the, any of the things that maybe sometimes pulled them back at school if there was anything. So it was super neat and again, the Earth Day thing was very, very fun and again, students signed up for that. They're a little bit different structure. So somewhere in the middle is probably the one that we need to use, but we're gonna figure that out as we keep doing this.
We've got Field Days coming up where we also hope for more middle school and high school stuff with our students as well.
Yeah, so super fun for that.
Okay, next one, just increasing community engagement and voices. So, I mean, the big one, Vanguard Voices, which we were all a part of, which was bringing all those community members in, which I think was, I mean, it was fantastic and excited to see the good work that happens after that. We've had lots of opportunities to bring community members, parents in for all the handbooks that we have solicited feedback. Barb and I meet with the village leaders on a monthly basis and that is, I think that just started up again, I think it was done years past, but that's been really great. So continuing to find ways to engage our community. Also, so enhancing communication so that transparency piece. So we, the newsletters that go out from our elementary and middle high school, they go out electronically, but we also sent the first paper one this March. And I think that that built, built a lot of excitement in the community. And I can't do that for everyone because it's a little expensive, but we'll still try to do that so that people know what's going on. Also on our website, we're still in the process of really redoing the website, but we created a fantastic video that showcases our school district that sits right on the homepage, which I continue to get compliments about. So that's there. We also do just some other things with the snapshot for board meetings, because we want to make sure that our community knows what board meetings are and make it easy for them and talk about what happened after. So Dale, other communication tools that I know that you've been.
Yeah, I'll start with NextPath. Actually, just leading up to school year, going ready with App 20 is really what led us to this, just working with some other school districts, how they're getting their processes in place. NextPath was one of those programs I kept hearing about, so did a little homework. And it was a great decision for us to just bring that onboard, easy access to all our data, all our testing uploads and our, it's really helped out at the elementary level with our communication piece for our parents, with all of our meeting plans, the screeners that we do there. Just that was, looking back, you know, that was a no-brainer, but to start, it was, it was a little bit of a shift, just getting that, but it was great having a new team. They just jumped onboard and everything like, so that was great. And then entering campus, spent a couple of months, really interesting conversation, talking with staff, talking with other school districts, doing our homework. Big shift, as you know, it's gonna be implemented in, for next school year. There's a small group, but I just want to give a shout out to Scott Wixler, Nikki Cutler, and Courtney Warren. They're doing a lot of heavy lifting right now behind the scenes, downloading all of our data off of Skyward. And it is, we're in the process of uploading all of our data, so it'll be about 12 years of data that we're, we're gonna be bringing, bringing forward. And it's very exciting and we keep telling ourselves, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be worth it. It's gonna be worth it. But as we're doing it, I'm learning more. I've used, I've been in education 29 years, I've never used Infinite Campus. I've been a Skyward person myself, so you know, the shift, I think it was just a positive change and I appreciate just all of the staff and just being willing to consider it and in the end saying, yeah, it's, it's time for a change. So I think that's a big, big decision for us. So happy about that.
And what more, Dale?
As Dale, you mentioned AI. So we have staff members that are all over the board with AI. We have some staff members that, you know, they're, you know, you can talk about being next to the water, they're, they're way up on shore, they don't want to get near AI. We have a few people that are dabbling in it a little bit. Staff members, they, they've jumped right in and they're doing backstrokes. So we wanted to put together a little bit more of a focused plan. And so we reached out, we've done some piloting with a few programs, we're asking a lot of questions and we've attended a couple of workshops this school year. We intend to expand this into next school year. I would anticipate us coming to the board with some, some new policy, just with expectations. That's gonna take a team of people to put that together and just what does that look like? We're learning a lot from other districts. Again, Dependable Solutions, they've been helping us, they're helping South Prairie right now write their new AI program and they're, and the expectations that they have for staff and students. And so they're bringing that to us. But wanted to put that out there because that is, that is an area curriculum-wise and learning-wise that I think we've pushed on a little bit more, but we've done it quietly. Haven't talked a lot about it, but it is out there. We have some staff doing some pretty cool things with it.
Okay, another thing under this topic is expanding community partnerships. So as some of you may remember, we did our Big Mock Accidents, so brought in so many community partners to make sure that that was successful. Things we learned that we're gonna do differently in the future, but there's definitely that.
And then the other activity was just a partnership with the library, actually, where we dismissed kids and worked on the signups and the facilitating, like getting kids outside a couple of times throughout the year. And then at the end, they would be dropped back off at the library to be supervised, so it didn't impact our staff or anything like that after school one day. So it was a nice partnership. They actually had to switch from one van to two because of the numbers that were signing up and we hope to continue that for next year as well.
Another one for Dale?
Yeah, well, I put the flyer, we've talked, we talked a lot about Career Day earlier on, you know, just, and again, one of those things that just had to be on our list, so looking forward to doing it again next year. Trying to do it in October next school year.
Okay, any of these, let's see.
Second thing, our school committees, so just to help with becoming a new, I wanted to make sure staff voices were heard. And so putting, trying to make sure staff were on either our PVAS committee, our Climate and Culture Committee, or the School Leadership Committee, so that they had a say into different events or how things were done with students and, or just that leadership piece. I think staff really valued that, I was willing to listen and help take their ideas and to grow with their ideas.
And then with Sarah and I and Liz all being new, Sarah and I just met, we've kind of been figuring out all of our roles and responsibilities and we've, like, we're gonna try to do a lot more things joint, district-wide, especially around attendance and then even behavior as well.
Okay, student empowerment and support, so amplifying student voice. And so I, oh, we put some.
Sorry, I have a lot more, but then I was like, I can't.
I put, we started off when we, when we've all got here in July, we actually had a student voice summit and brought some students in just to get their ideas. And I know that they, Liz and Tom, continued to do that at the start of the year. I know students were brought in to meet with our food service director to talk about like, how can we make our, our lunches better or more, I don't know. A lot of it was education, so the students understood too, like why certain things were the way they were. Now, if you, Tom or Liz are unsure.
I mean, I can definitely, when we did the, when we brought the students together to do the handbook, that was kind of a partnered piece with also talking about food services. And the reason for that was just, you know, choices, understanding, like Michelle said about the educational piece of, okay, food is decided for next school year in February, the February before. So that's why we wanted to get that going before, right before the holidays, so we could make sure that we have these conversations. Because the kids have not understood, they're like, what do you mean, you're not ordering it the night before? No, we don't order it the night before, it's not like that, that's all already processed out and already put through. And so that was really, honestly, that was a fun conversation to have, once we all realized that, they're like, oh. And then of course, they went through like a whole menu of stuff and they're like, oh, I really don't like that, but we love those. And so, you know, but that has to also happen. But then the other fun thing that happened in that conversation were things that we haven't had here and will now be kind of brought because it just wasn't things that we had talked about or ever had or tried. So students brought up some things, if this is possible. So those are really fun conversations. Some of these is this, we talked a lot about for recess and some of the middle school options. If you don't know middle schoolers, middle schoolers do like to move. They, they really do and they really value that lunch and getting out and doing recess, whether it's in the gym or outside. And so trying to really come up with something that's sustainable and that we have people that can help us monitor it. Because obviously, Tom and I can't be in all the places at lunch and sometimes we're pulled away, so we really have to understand and be able to do this. So some of the students, while they were outside one day, this is like one of our first nice days in March, I think it was like the beginning of March, I was like, great, here is the goal, envision this in like mid-May, what do you want these, this time to look like? But they did come up with a few things that has given us some changes. We're trying to get to the last part of their change, which is to have lunch outside as well on Tuesdays and Fridays with, and obviously working with our food service, which is awesome, they're gonna do disposable things. And as soon as we have like a nice Tuesday and a nice Friday, we will have that as an option for our middle school students as well. But then they could also walk to track or they can help out in the backside to play basketball, but still outside, just to get that outside feel and those things. High school-wise, this was a picture from our, one of our homecoming pieces. When I look at that group of young people, they are also another group of young people that will come forward and help out to share some perspectives in a way that's constructive to what we are trying to work on. So for example, we were talking a lot about different opportunities up in the, in the strength and conditioning area. And because, and if you, if you don't know all those students, but they all use it, but just in a different capacity. So it was really a unique experience to hear from them, alright, well, this really, we could do something like this or something, do we have anything like that? As a result, Coach Williams has taken that on to say, hey, can we make some of these adjustments? Really kind of looking to see where we can go with some of this for our students. Because reality is, we want our kids to be, to be healthy as well. So if there's a chance for them to do some of those workouts where they have a good place, they feel good about themselves, I think we'll have even more kids in there. There's some stuff.
Okay, Kelly?
I thought it was really neat, we started to improve some of our special education practices, meaning we had a couple of kids who actually led their IEPs, so they were able to talk through their IEPs, building that advocacy. I had our youngest 504 student yet be there and lead her kind of 504, so that's really exciting. I would also say just more targeted support for students, more effective problem solving, given the additional resources we had in special education and student services with Tom's position and with the school site intern position. And then, I hope Bev's not here and Craig's not here, but boy, that student council, they really did a lot this year, so I felt like that is an important thing to highlight. And to continue, talking about those students and those students in need, looking at special education and student services, 130 IEP meetings is my guess for the end of the year, with 70 of those including initial evaluations or reevaluations, which means there's substantial testing in the board that goes into it, substantial amounts of time and hours. Nine dismissals and then our caseloads, caseloads ranged from eight to 20 when you're looking at special education teachers. That doesn't include a speech language pathologist or an occupational therapist who have larger caseloads. And then in student services, I think all of us got to get better at behavior threat assessments, unfortunately, because we just made those more systematic and learned our triage systems and kind of just created that because it wasn't in place before. Julie Horner and her intern are working on getting a relaxation room in place for next year when we have a student services section. Mike Ruby did a lot of learning and shifting his practices for EL instruction, which was just great to see. Very much took on some of those high schoolers, making sure they're passing their classes and some of those younger kids really diving in to increase their access scores. And then we also just are finishing up on Mental Health Awareness Month and helping our staff be available to respond.
Alright, what we've all been waiting for, accountability and business responsibility. So we have Fran, so.
That's me. Do you want me to talk now? Thank you for letting me join in this presentation. I asked Michelle, do you want me to put together my report? She said, not if you put together a slide. So this is my slide, so thank you. And I would reflect and just say exactly what Jim said, every time that I am in any corner in this district or building or talking to somebody, I am nothing but impressed. Sensational. And I wanted to just share a couple of sort of stories, if you would just indulge me just for a few minutes. One is that I spent 20 years at a district that would call themselves exceptional and was leading the way in test scores and was a top 20 in scorecard. And they were very proud and had a lot to boast for, but inside that administrative circle, there was, there was a, you know what, we're not better than Wisconsin Heights. So congratulations. True story. And another is being engaged with the district and to build a scorecard. And what I have up here, what I think are the pillars for success financially. And you have every box checked and, and I'll just run down them real quick. You have an operating referendum in place, your community is supporting all of your academic and non-academic needs, so congratulations. You have a compensation plan in place, so you're keeping, you're keeping pace in market. You have created stability through stable enrollment. I've been around a long time and I know the Wisconsin Heights story. It follows, mimics Lodi's story very closely, but now you're stable and so you can plan forward. You have, I mean, just look around the facilities, I know where you came from, I know where you're at, this is a beautiful facility, congratulations on that. And the last thing is that you're undergoing a strategic planning process and the same one that Lodi went through and it's gonna be wonderful for you. I can't wait to watch the administration report out all the accomplishments. That's my part.
Couple of the ones, Kelly?
Also, just improving our special education accountability, we'll be looking at, we looked ahead at the compliance assessment that happens every four years and started to get ready for that, looking at our data collection, how we're writing our IEPs, things like that. And then Dale and I had a nice experience with Michelle of getting all that Title IX training in place and then shifting it right back and changing, because we just have to continuously respond to the political climate and the legislation, so.
Alright, and then we just talked a little bit about areas of growth, like what we, I mean, we know that there's a strategic plan coming out of all of our, the Vanguard Voices piece, but what are some things that we know that we want to continue to work on as we move into next year? So you can see ultimately though, it's just enhancing those support systems, our community-driven strategic plan, which I talked about, improving our understanding of our resources and utilization of those, continuing to always work on trust and transparency and our communication strategies around that. Technology and a unified school culture, that we still want to continue to find new ways to bring our campuses together, our campus together. Let's see, professional development opportunities for our staff around student learning and growth. And then hopefully, with that strategic plan, creating a stronger PLC model and a simple process in the, in the process of that. So that is where we're at. So are we opening it up for questions or? Any questions?
My comment is, obviously, last year this time.
My comment is, obviously, last year this time, we knew we had a lot of new people coming in and staff were approaching me and they, you know, you get concerned in that moment because you have a whole bunch of new bosses coming in. And just over this last year, I think you've all done a really good job to instill confidence, not only in your self-escalators, but where the district is going and where public education in this district is going. So just kudos to you to speak to that, both from a student perspective, having new people come in, but also, I think, the staff, just gaining their trust. You've done a really great job at that.
I think everything you shared fully embodies the essence of teamwork and how proud we are to have this team in front of us. And I know as individuals, very powerful in your roles, but it's just so clear when you come together that you really are working together and the strength is in the teamwork. And I think for the first time in a long time, I felt and could sense the culture just from this presentation and the very emphasis on kids and opportunities and their experience beyond the classroom, especially here. And we're very proud of the test scores and the achievements, but to just know that you all are diligently working hard on amplifying those experiences outside of the classroom, I think is really important. And extra kudos for that, too.
I think the big thing that we wanted to address this year with all the new staff was the climate and culture, and that has been clearly now directing in the right direction where it hasn't been in the past. So great job with that, keep that going in that right direction, so good job.
And I would hope that you're going to put this out for people to see because I think this is a very proud moment in amplifying the work that you all are doing. And again, like Brent said, establishing that core of this community and this school community and all that is for everyone, so top notch.
Well, we have a fantastic team. Thanks. All right. All right.
Thank you, thanks. No, it's Paul up there.
All there, great. All right, you have everyone. Okay, moving on to finance. Do I have a motion to approve the 2526 collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers, WHFT, and base wage increase of 2.95%?
So moved.
Any further discussion, questions? Do you have anyone on that? Herring Dunn, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie? Still with us?
Oh, she's voting, or she's talking there.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right, I vote yes as well. 6.2, do I have a motion to approve the supplemental incentive pay for WHFT for the 2526 school year?
So moved.
Second.
And any questions on that? Okay, Mary Beth, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, we have some time for discussion on Fund 80. So you're going to table that to the next... Derek, yes. See Derek here. Talking to Tia Brett, he's like, that's not my guy. So we're going to table 6.3 for future meeting. 6.4, do I have a motion to approve the CISA contracts for 2526?
So moved.
And any questions on those attached contracts?
It's a good deal for the budget support we get, I feel. I feel very well supported on the budget side. Derek and now Brent answer a lot of our questions, so thank you.
Agreed. Okay, Herring Dunn, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. You're still on for the budget revision?
Next meeting.
Table, okay.
Table.
Table 6.
It's the action.
It's the action.
Okay, we'll do it just to show. Here, do I have a motion to table 6.5?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right. 7.1, we met previously, the Policy Committee did, about employee handbook provisions for the 2526 school year. Had a very engaging conversation. There is a bit in there, language-wise, revolving around overloads and scheduling, roles and responsibilities that we had some pretty thorough discussion on. And I think you could add to it, but I think we're going to have some committee task force work revolving around that topic and see what comes out of it from the staff perspective. But given the fact that the employee handbook had not been looked at or revised for quite some time, there's this need to get it out there so the rest of the changes and updates can be in front of people. So we are going to, I'll ask for a motion to approve it tonight with the caveat knowing that there probably is going to be amendment language down the line or a change or update before the beginning of next school year. So I will entertain a motion to approve the employee handbook for the 2526 school year.
So moved.
Any questions on that?
Normally, that would have been a no, but because of the amount of questioning and working with Dr. McGrath and Ms. Centel and Mr. Green, I think that they are actually on the hunt for, like, relevant information. So I'm very appreciative of the willingness to go back and take that self-reflective look about, okay, how does this compare and how does it look? So with that, yeah, I totally trust and I trust this administration more than most and more than the other ones I work with, so.
And I think it highlights the work within the committee structure. I think that's a nice feature to be able to kind of hash out those things and think about the perspectives and should light on something I said. I guess previously we hadn't discussed. Thank you for that. So you're going to vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And I guess I will take a motion to table the approval of the co-curricular handbook to a future date.
So moved.
Questions? Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. I will entertain a motion to combine 8.1 to 8.8. And there's a reason for that, if you're looking at that.
So moved.
I'll second.
And one reason I combined it was hopefully not giving anybody the opportunity to vote no on Bev's resignation. I wanted to, you wanted to. But she wants us to vote yes. So obviously, we are recognizing Bev Wayland's resignation and just to throw out major kudos and a tremendous amount of gratitude for everything that she has done for us, simply cannot be said in words and how much we're going to miss her. So we have to make note of that. And also thank Sherri Herring for her years of service and a lot of new, exciting hires in the Bunch there. So anyone else like to make comment or question on that?
Bev brought a ton of stability to a very, very difficult position. Like, I was interested, I mean, she has done just an incredible job, so losing her is going to be really tough.
And you alluded to a work to run with the student Bunch and...
Well, the two years I've been on the board, Sherri, I can now imagine.
She sounds so good.
Yeah, and Sherri had been teaching here for a while, too, when I was in school. So lots of incredible work for this community from all of them.
But I guess we'll say we've got a new speech and language pathologist. We've got a new certified occupational therapy assistant, new phys ed teacher, a new business ed teacher. Woo! I can win the bag.
They did dance.
They did. Really excited about that, and how that's going to play into the new offerings for our kids. New first grade teacher and 4K teacher, so a lot of new members adding to the team, which is exciting as well. So we will take a vote. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. 8.9, I will entertain a motion to approve the hire of Angie Baker Antice as a spec ed EA for the 2526 school year, pending her resignation from her current position. So she's currently employed in a part-time role and is going to be switching to this new full-time role, but we don't have her existing resignation in hand from her current position, so just making sure we're procedurally doing things right.
Pending resignation.
Pending resignation from her current position.
So moved.
I'll second.
You're good. So you go look back.
For more of your time, thank you. Okay, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. 9.1, we have an acknowledgement of $100 donation to the Vanguard Racing Team from Lancaster's Piggly Wiggly. Thanks to them and way to go racing team. Still out there. Future meeting dates. We are not meeting on Memorial Day, Mary Beth. Make a point of that. Tuesday, May 20th, is our special meeting where we're going to hear from our Steering Committee members on the strategic plan presentation that starts at 5:30. And then probably some more Policy Committee meetings on the horizon, not yet scheduled. And then just to make notes, we're going to say July 8th, our Board Retreat. We're going to shoot for 5:00 PM, is what I heard from most people. So jot that down. Then moving on, I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent C, and parent E and C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the Board will reconvene to open session following closed. So, motion?
Is that Isaiah?
Oh, Mary Beth.
Mary Beth.
Okay, Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.